Everybody. I will, let's see. As you all know, the Mission Springs Water District, I'm just going to read the top part here. Do we have a public knows we're having a meeting on this ringtone? Anyway, Ring Central Meeting. So I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Martin. Okay, we're going to have to figure out his audio. Director Grasha.
Here.
Vice President Duncan.
Here.
President Wright.
Here.
Thank you, we have quorum.
Russ, can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you hear Dory?
I had my phone on mute at the time she called my name.
Oh, okay, okay, but you heard her, okay.
Good, we're good to go.
Okay. So we will, actually, we will do the pleasure legions on Monday. So now we'll do the public input part of the meeting. Do we have anybody that would like to speak at public input?
I received no emails or notifications from the public for public input.
Okay, thank you. Number five, COVID-19 update. General Manager, Arden Wallen.
Okay. Thank you, President Wright. Well, welcome everyone and trust that you are all staying safe. And as I said last time, we are experiencing something most of us have never seen before. And together, we're going to get through this. Every level of government has concluded and directed that providing safe, reliable water is an essential function. So that means that we need to find a way to provide this service and maintain a safe work environment for our staff and customers. And I'm happy to say that we have made some changes from the very beginning that have so far been successful. We've not had any reported cases and are following the strict guidelines when and if our staff are exposed. Now, that has happened and it will happen, but we've been very vigilant in protecting the staff from possible contamination. Being us in this public and maintaining, in the public and maintaining the safe practices is a challenge. And we want to be as cautious as we possibly can. The healthcare industry states, I think it's kind of a clever quote, and that is, this is the end of the beginning. This isn't over. So we are continuing with that message. And today, I want to say that I have extended the split staffing to a tentative date of June 1st. We are working on changing things around in the administration building and yard area to accommodate sanitation recommendations, as well as accomplishing the social distancing rules. We have developed guidelines that are nearly complete. And this will set in place requirements that should prevent the spread of this virus when we do revert back to a full working staff. So I'm going to let my management staff here take it from here and give you some additional details. And I think we're starting out with Brian. Do you want to?
Yes.
Look for Mike.
Thank you, Arden. Again, good afternoon, everyone. Board, Madam President, just to touch on some of the more details that we're working on right now as we start to work for bringing everyone back together. Review and comment of the draft recommended action steps for the COVID-19 that was prepared by our consultant, Sternman Emergency Management Consulting. We're also reviewing the available space to make sure that we're following the social distancing guidelines at the three main buildings. I would consider that the administration, the annex building, as well as the corporate yard. Really looking for additional space for staff. We're not using some conference space, we're not using the boardroom right now. We'd like to use that space to make sure that we're staying as far apart as possible. Also looking at each building from a traffic flow perspective to minimize any congregations in the hallways. Several of our hallways in the admin building are less than six feet wide. So we also have some small offices, things like that. Just making sure that we're cognizant of where those are and how we're going to operate, especially during the times of everybody coming together at 7:30 or everyone leaving at 5:30, what are the protocols so we don't all bunch at the stairwell at the same time? Also preparing a checklist. This is something that we run as the employees to look at every day as sort of a mental preparation. With bringing everyone together, we just want everybody to be cognizant. This is a little bit new. When we were going Team A and Team B, the idea was that if one of the teams got infected or quarantined, the other team would take over. We may not have that opportunity if we're all congregating together at one time. So we want to make sure that everybody understands the ramifications of that. We also want to address the need for additional disinfectant products, wipes, sprays, things of that nature. Review our reentry guidelines. They're similar to the way we operate today, but there are some specific things that we've added just to make sure that we accommodate the extra staff. And then, of course, the training of the staff. Set the expectation, make them understand what is expected of them, as well as what if someone tests positive? Now, we've had that procedure in place since the beginning, but I think it'd be a good opportunity to go over it one more time, just so everybody's on the same page. So that's some of the details that we're working on and will be working on over the next couple of weeks as we set our sights on the June 1 deadline. Arden, that's all I have to report.
All right. All right.
Anybody else on that subject, Arden?
Yeah, well, we were going to have Danny and then Matt. So next would be Danny, if he has anything to say.
Thanks, Dory. Good afternoon, everyone, Madam President, Board. Not a lot to add. Arden said it in his intro. Brian covered quite a bit. We have been successful in operating in a alternate rotating teams because of our staff. They've made this a success. So we've said it often, I just want to throw it out there again, thank you to all of our staff. And this is something that we've shared in our executive meetings. We're prepared for major catastrophes and how to respond in emergencies like that. And this virus seems to be, we learn something each day from the health experts and from the local and state authorities. So we're just keeping abreast of all the changes. And this will obviously cause our plan that Brian's hit on to evolve as this goes forward. So it is focused on the safety of our staff. And we look forward to getting back together, hopefully on the first. That's all I have.
All right, we're going to have Matt next.
I think you're good, Matt. Go ahead and say something.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the board. Just a quick update from the customer service and administration side of the operation. Customer service payments are surprisingly consistent. We have seen a slight reduction in customer payments, but less than 10%. So a variance of that size could or could not be related to this COVID pandemic. Delinquencies are just now, literally today and tomorrow, this would be the delinquent timeframe for bills that were sent out in mid-March when all of this started. So we are closely monitoring that, but not a lot of news to report as of now. But I will keep everybody updated as those statistics come in. We haven't had a lot of complaints about the lobby being closed and the customer service team is 100% functioning currently. The AMI project continues. We have various crews throughout the town still installing and changing out meters and registers. To date, we have 8,000, a little over, almost 8,400 meters changed out, which is about 65% of the project. So that is going as scheduled. Thankfully, our investments in Cal Trust are not only maintaining, but the prices have creeped up since the last time we spoke. So that's good news. It's nothing major and chances are toward the end of the year, those prices will start to drop depending on who you talk to. But for the time being, our principal is secure and we are making a slight amount of investment income from those investments. Just a little bit of news, yesterday, the Congress introduced a bill. It hasn't passed yet, but there could be another wave of stimulus coming. And it includes $1.5 billion worth of water bill assistance for customers. So just thought that was news as of today. And we'll keep you apprised as to any further details we hear about that as far as implementation and who will get what and how much. And that completes my report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Does that conclude item number five, Arden?
Yes, it does. Unless you have any questions, of course.
I have a question.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
It occurs to me that the board likely won't be using the board conference room. Is that me? And it occurred to me that it might be some space you guys might be able to use down there for general purposes or offices. And if that's the case, as a director, I wouldn't mind. I don't know how other people would feel about maybe opening that up to move a couple of people or partitions, however you're separating people. But I don't see the board meeting in there from what I'm hearing for at least a year. So that's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That's a good suggestion.
Okay, anybody else on that topic before I move on? Okay, hearing done. Item number seven, I mean, six, public hearing. We'll be doing that on Monday for collection of sewer fees on.
President Wright. Sorry to interrupt. Danny, before you moved on, Danny had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Danny. I thought you were just messing around. No, I'm just kidding, I didn't see you. Sorry.
No, I just wanted to provide some additional information to Director Grasha. That is the intent. Right now, we've done an analysis of our offices and there's enough separation in our individual offices. And we are going to be putting the front office, hopefully splitting them into the annex, which has worked before when we had issues with the rain. But earlier, when Brian was covering the use of the downstairs conference room and the boardroom is such, what the details he left out is currently, we're still planning on meeting like we are today just simply because it's the technology that's been working for us. And we'll do that while we're all back in the building. The concern is businesses are still closed, mainly restaurants. When people bring their lunches or go out to break to go get a lunch, they come back to the building. And we need to have a safe area that provides social distancing and a couple of different areas along with staggering lunches and breaks. So we do have plans and we have been discussing that. So that's a great idea. I just wanted to elaborate on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number six, the public hearing, as I said, will be on Monday for the collection of sewer fees on the tax roll. General Manager, I'll hand it over to you.
That's, this is something we do every year and Matt can elaborate on it too. But I don't necessarily know that, I don't have anything in particular to say. It's a very routine process. I've now actually forgotten how many years we've been doing this, but several years at least. So you might ask Matt if he has anything to add to that.
So you, Matt, is Matt the speaker?
No, nothing to add. Just annual administrative required procedures to put those charges on the tax roll.
That's annual, yes. Okay. So we'll do that on Monday, have a public hearing on that matter. So item number seven, Resolution 2020-08 recommending approval of Skyborne Development Partial Assignment and Assumption Agreement. Arden.
Okay. This development started out as a D.R. Horton project. And we, actually, Peggy and I and Wayne were the ones that worked on the contract. And then it.
Arden, I apologize. I'm going to recuse myself on this item because I believe somebody in our firm had done some work for Skyborne at one point. It may have been over a year ago, but just in an abundance of caution, I'm going to step out on this one.
All right, John, I'm going to put you in a waiting room, okay?
Okay, and I'll step out of the room.
Could I ask a question on that?
Wait, 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 Steve. What?
Well, on his recusal. Could you ask him to check and see if he's got a, otherwise I might have some questions for him on Monday on this.
It appears as if he stepped away. John, can you hear us?
I doubt it.
Yeah, I doubt it. Okay, well, we'll ask him.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, go ahead.
All right. All right, okay, back to this. It's a contract that we entered into some years ago. Danny will give you the specifics. What you're doing today is mainly what is set out as a requirement of that contract. And it needs your approval before they can assign any of these connection fee credits. And Danny can explain that. There's only 29 of them, a very insignificant amount. But the process is still never, is still the same. And that is, we do need to go to the board every time they decide to reassign those connection fee credits. So Danny, I'll let you explain it.
Thank you, Arden. Good afternoon again. So as Arden was talking about, the original development agreement that was done back in, it's in the SBAF report of 2006, I believe. There was a second amendment. The second amendment was what triggered what's happening today. Rather than just a typical assignment that would happen as a successor of that project, it's been requested that the Mission Springs Water District approve that. And that's what we're here today asking the board to do. The developer of the overall project has sold 29 lots that will build up the remaining portion of Village One, or what's typically called Phase One. And this resolution and agreement is a partial assignment of those 29 lots. What this does is they paid for quite a bit of infrastructure that has general use. And the service credit agreement for water only today allows them to apply their connection fees. In this particular case, those 29 lots and connection fees are $126,237. So this is just a formality process of the original agreement, first and second amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you say reapply the fees, what exactly does that mean? We collected the fees and now we're turning the fees, where are the fees going to end up?
The infrastructure that was built offsite of this project is typically constructed with connection fees, water and sewer connection fees. In this case, I'll keep it to water since this agreement's for water only. And when they were required to build it upfront, the developer agreement that we're discussing, or this reassignment, partial reassignment, is allowing the developer, because as the original agreement, as each home is built and connects to water and sewer, the connection fee is applied as a credit back towards this agreement. It buys down their obligation because they've already built said infrastructure, general use infrastructure.
Their responsibility to build that infrastructure, we collected the money to do it. I assume, did we expend money for any of the construction of that work? Just confused, it sounds like some money's going back to the developer.
Offsite, Danny, is that offsite you're talking about or onsite?
That's correct. There was a few different questions there. I'm going to do my best to make sure I hit them in the order asked. The developer is always required to pay for all infrastructure within the development that has specific use to the development. The items that we're discussing today are general use that are offsite, that are used beyond just that development, such as truck mains, or in this case, transmission mains, backbone lines, reservoirs, and wells. So the agreement, well, and typically the infrastructure is constructed by connection fees. So the developer has paid for all this infrastructure upfront and through the agreement gets to apply service credits in a way of connection fees back towards their obligation.
Because they already paid it.
Yeah. Basically.
Go ahead, Arden, you're about, okay, go ahead, Arden. I see your little hand down here.
All right, all right. Basically, what the developer does is he builds the fee, he builds the infrastructure in lieu of paying the development fee or the connection fee. So what we're saying is you've built it, so now we don't, now it would be double dipping for us to charge it again. So they get a credit when they get ready to sell the house. Now, the other thing you need to know is Skyborne doesn't build, they're a developer, you know, unless they want to get into that type of work. So normally, he will have builders come in and purchase a certain block of those, of his development. And then they'll build on it and then sell the property. But, so that, that's why we need to assign the credits to the, to the developer, or to the builder. And Danny, correct me if I said anything wrong there, but.
Yeah, correct. In this, I'm sorry, Madam President, do you have something to say?
I was just going to say that as a, as a, being in the construction business, we always call that those connection fees, what we call them, is a buy-in to the system. The system's already built, designed, and it's that development's buy-in to the system is the connection charges. So they already bought in by putting in their infrastructure they needed on the offsite, so they get their money back. That's what that money was for to begin with. Right, Danny?
True. And that's like for an existing, for an existing lot that, for example, is what we refer to as infill. So that does apply. In this case, it's similar to what Arden was saying. They pay for 100% of the onsite, which is, again, as I mentioned, it's their specific use. The offsite has general use. It's going to be used by others of this organization. So it's not fair to condition that development to build all that infrastructure and allow everybody else to use it. So there's, that's why it was built into this service credit agreement. So they put all the capital upfront, build said infrastructure as required by the district. And rather than double dip, as Arden said, they get a service credit back towards that.
Those are the street lines within the development, the lines within the development in the street, right? Those kind of, those kind of lines, not onsite on the people's property line itself.
Yes.
Yes. So it's better clarified, without getting too nerdy or geeky into this, the distribution lines within the streets that feed each home are paid for by the developer and solely that's their cost. The infrastructure that's required to feed that development, the offsite from the reservoir to the well, to the development as a backbone or a transmission line, are the lines being discussed today? Or is the infrastructure being discussed today? And that was all paid for upfront by the developer.
Right. Well, my impression was that the fees that we charged them was to pay for that. And you're saying they did pay for that separately from their, from the fees that you're talking about refunding them?
We're not refunding, we're applying the paper credit towards their obligation that they've already paid. They've already built and designed and constructed said lines that are generally and typically paid for by the connection fees that were mentioned by Arden.
What did, what did, what did the ratepayers separate from Horton pay?
The same amount. It's the amount that's been set by resolution and ordinance. It's our actual connection. So.
Steve, what was that question about ratepayers?
Well, you know, I would.
What was that? Did he answer your question?
I can understand sometimes taking a, like typically you would be required to issue a bond to ensure that certain work gets done. And then that bonding company would release the bond when the work is done. In this case, we're, did we become the bonding company?
No, not at all. So this project does have a bond. The bond that you're referring to, a performance and payment bond, is and was a requirement of this project, are in place currently. And that is if the developer were to default on the infrastructure that was conditioned and designed to be constructed. This, let me simply say it differently. If there was zero infrastructure construct, or any offsite construction, it was just onsite, the pipeline that was required of all developers to pay, so that it's not on the backs of the ratepayers, they would pay their connection fee when we collect that fee. But because this project was, is where it is, they had, they're required to build additional infrastructure that has general use, and they paid for that upfront. It was not on the backs of the ratepayers. We're not refunding any money. We're applying the actual connection fee that is charged today that's set by our resolution and ordinance. And we're applying that based on the size of the meter that goes to each one of those 29 lots as a service credit back to what they've already paid.
Again, let me add to that, Director Grasha, as I said. What they've done is, they've done the work in lieu of paying us to do the work. In other words, if that wasn't done, they would pay us this service credit and we would have to go out and build the infrastructure. But as Danny said, that's not how, you can't develop like that because you need to, they're going to, they put the whole thing in, millions of dollars, and they're probably going to come up short quite a bit. But they, but so in place of charging them then, again, which is why I said it would be double dipping, is they went out and built the infrastructure, then we would charge them as if we had built it. And that's not, that's not fair either, so, or legal. So we have agreed to allow them service credits for so many of these lots.
Are you, are you talking, Arden? I know the developers, Skyborne paid 100% for the line to be brought all the way out Pearson to that development. And then at that time, the other one, Smellenberger Project, paid from, to bring it, paid part of that and then to bring it under Highway 62. That was all paid by the developers.
That, that's for sewer though, not for water, but yes.
Water was brought out there too.
Yes, same concept.
But the sewer went under, yeah.
Yeah, same concept, only water, we just go to the well location, okay?
Yeah, there wasn't much infrastructure out there by Skyborne, so that developer had to bring it out there.
I would like to clarify, just for record, I don't want to speculate that they're going to come up short. That's not really, we don't know. We don't have a crystal ball of what's going to happen with the building community. But what Arden was essentially saying is, I failed to mention, this has a timeframe to it. Once the first connection start, well, in the second amendment, it started and it goes for 10 years. So in 10 years, if they haven't completed the entire project that is, the entire project, and they have service credits still left to receive, the contract's over, then they will be paying that amount directly to us and it will no longer be a service credit agreement in place.
They will lose that. So it's a good deal for the district.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So we'll vote on that on Monday. So if anybody has any other questions, we can take it up on Monday. Okay, thank you, Danny. Thank you, Arden.
Okay.
Okay, item number eight, professional engineering services contract for Michael Platt Consulting, General Manager.
Actually, I'm going to.
Danny, who are you talking to?
I'm talking to Madam President, either you or Dory. Do we want to get John Pinkney back in the room?
He's back. Did we have a question for him? No.
Yes, Steve does, but we'll do that afterward.
Okay.
At the end of the, I wrote it down so we remember at the comment section.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so does anybody else, does anybody know? He'll probably just.
I'll start out. Danny's going to actually handle the next three. Normally, we would have been, we would have had this in front of you a little earlier, but like we said to you, every, you know, when we do these force accounts, we go out and re-advertise and try to solicit additional RFPs. And that's what we did this time. So that delayed the process. And we did that. And these three are contracts that Danny will elaborate on and basically is selection of the staff in that process. Okay, so Danny, you want to take off from there?
Yes, thank you, Arden. So as Arden was talking about, we did do a request for qualifications and proposals back in the beginning of March, beginning of April. We reviewed said respondents and selections were based off of qualifications, expertise of the firm. General Engineering Services, there's the next three amounts. I mean, I will speak on this one specifically, but this applies to the next three contracts. The amounts aren't necessarily guaranteeing them a project for, my apologies. In this case, for $100,000, it's up to, it's as needed. We'll use them on various development projects where we reimburse for all work that's done by, on developer projects, such as the one that we just discussed in the previous item. So there are operating costs that we use for general work that does not. So there are operating costs that we use for general work that does not apply, and then also there's help when they work on capital projects. But the, the main takeaway here is that we did do a, a request for qualifications and proposals. We did receive four. Today, I'll be asking for consideration of awarding contract to three different people, two subsequent items after this item. And that's the background of, of the proposal process. Any questions on that before, and, and well, before I actually open up for questions? On this particular item, Michael Platt Consulting, we're asking the board for consideration to award contract for not to exceed amount of $100,000. And that's all I have, once this questions.
Anybody raising their hand, Dory? Okay, Steve? Question?
Can you give me a, an example of the work that this firm has done for the district in the last year?
Yeah, not a problem. Review of RFP documents for other projects, mainly inspection services, plan check services, survey work, construction survey for some of our internal projects. Review of reports, they're an augment of, we use them to augment our current engineering department. It's, it's a, an order, and I'll speak on, in generalities because of the next two items as well. What each of these firms bring are more than just a one person, they typically bring anywhere from two to six people. Different types of, of engineering services from review of water supply assessments, conditions of approval for future projects, there's a number of things, there's, there's a broad spectrum of what goes on in the engineering department. And each one of these consultants that we're, we're looking at today provide those services.
Right, I remembered seeing the name attached to something, I think it was a stairway of some kind. I might have that confused with something at the railroad project I was working on. But that, I, I, you know, I, I see the payments going out and I just wonder, I wonder what they do for us. And this was one of the ones, there's also an engineering company I think is on the list today that used to work for me.
Possibly.
Interesting.
Just to let you know, this is a future heads up. Staff will be bringing to the board are, an update to our, our, what we call standards and specifications, commonly known here at the district as Developer Handbook. And, and Mike's been integral on that, so he's begun work on that so that we could hopefully around July bring that document back. But those are just a number of the things that he works on. Provides quite a bit of survey background and land-based information, confirmation and checks for the district, so. General in nature.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's item number eight. I'll, I'll switch to item nine, which is TKE, professional services. Anything else besides, that's not generic, it's specifically about that one?
I have one question about.
Let's, let's have staff report if we have.
Uh, just before I speak, Arden, did you wanna open anything up or just, I still got the floor?
Uh, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'll just, I would just go let you do all three of them, I'm basically there. They do a lot of general engineering work for us, but you can go ahead and specify.
This, this particular contract or this firm actually is, does the same as I mentioned earlier. There's a, quite a bit more that they, that they offer their, their staffs a little more heavily at, at their organization. So they provide a lot of program management support, for example, projects like the regional plant or the West Valley Water Reclamation Facility. So we have TK on, as a program manager for that project on our assisting, Brian and Victoria on the Regional Urban Water Management Program. Also assisting the general manager in our, in our general manager meetings as, as a result of the settlement agreements. They sit on behalf of the district for IRWM, so there's quite of other specific items that TK provides for us. Again, there is roughly, I'd say about nine different staff members from, from TKE that are working for the district right now in various expertise.
Okay, any questions on number nine? Steve?
Uh, just a curiosity really, you know, we, we approved those contracts over the last year for various projects with this company. And I was, every month when we get our report on the payments that have gone out, I don't see their name. I've seen, I, I can only remember once actually seeing it. Is there another way people get paid to, if somebody gets paid by electronic payment, does it show up on our, on our warrants?
It's probably something that, or Matt could answer, but I could say it always shows up on our register.
I haven't seen it, but I, 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 I'm not suspicious, I'm just curious if there's another way that those, that payments that might be made show up. Cause I, I've only seen their name getting a check one time and it's possible I missed it, but I looked pretty close. And I thought.
Regularly on the register of demands and any payments to these contractors would not be through wire or electronic transfer, they're actual checks.
So, so they would be on that document that you put out every month? Okay, I'll look harder, I, or maybe they haven't been, I don't know, I'll look harder.
I, I think I, I understand where you might be getting at, and I will admit that TKE has, uh, I believe been late on a few of their invoices, they're, they're not like some of our other vendors that, that hunt down a check and want something paid. And it's so, they've, and, and I, and I should have actually been, done a better job on this item, the next item and the previous item is. I will note that these three that we're talking about today haven't raised their fee schedule by more than $5 per hour over the last six, seven years. So what you are noticing is probably correct, you'll probably see a big registered demands item for TKE coming maybe by May, this, 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 or June. Because they do sometimes.
Let them stack up.
They do let things stack up, but that's, it's, but it's all being reviewed by staff and it's confirmed that the work matches the invoices, so. Thanks, Matt, for helping me out on that earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 10, any specifics on that one, Danny?
Um, item number 10 is, I would say along the lines more general, like Michael Platt, they do do, they do also perform quite a bit of inspection on our cap, on our, on our development projects. So a lot, most of these cannabis cultivators that you see that are happening, there's still a lot of that going on. Plan check process for the district and not having an, an on-staff inspector, specifically inspector, you don't see that a lot in smaller agencies, they normally wear several different hats. But not having one, the engineering department lacks what we would refer to as like a field representative or field representative or inspector. So they also provide field checks for certain project follow-up that's not necessarily inspection. So general to the, the first Michael Platt Consulting, but they, they do quite a bit of inspection for us. That's all I have, unless there's questions.
Okay, thank you. Got a question, what happened to Russ? Is Russ still around, Russ Martin? Dory? You're on mute, Dory.
I'm here. Russ, I just unmuted you.
Okay, did Russ, okay, he's not on the screen, I just wondered what happened.
Yeah, he's here, I see him.
You see him? Okay, okay, item number third, no, there we are, item number 11. Approval of General Manager's Employment Agreement, okay, on, I think everybody got a copy of Arden's contract that's in place right now. And this is the third year of this contract. And he has requested that nothing, nothing change as far as money goes or anything else on the contract. Basically, the, the main change in the contract is written under number two where it says salary, talking about the COVID pandemic and the reasoning.
I'm gonna accuse myself, if you don't mind. Okay, as per John's recommendation.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't realize you were gonna do that, okay, no problem.
Okay, he's in a waiting room.
Okay, so, so he's not, we're not, no, no money, no money change for, for right now until we figure out what's going on with the pandemic and the, and the revenue stream. And so on this thing, it says that we will possibly it be, go back by October 15th to look at seeing what's going on with the revenues and what's happening and see if we might be able to do something more at that time. So he, he has asked just to have, just to vote on this contract, it's a three-year contract without any changes of any money. And then discuss it further on, by October 15th, which is the date of our next study session. So we could, we could then talk about it then, so you guys, you, you've all got, did you all get copies of the contract?
It's in the packet, Nancy, and can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's essentially from a, from a salary standpoint, it's a status quo agreement. It states that due to the financial uncertainty caused by the global COVID pandemic, the employee and district have agreed that employee will be subject to a temporary salary freeze and will forego a cost of living adjustment historically scheduled to occur on July 1, 2020. So that salary adjustment won't occur. And then it says the district will review the employee's salary for possible adjustment no later than October 15, 2020. And at that time may increase the employee's compensation an amount to be determined in the board's discretion. The board shall also review the employee's base salary for increases on July 1, 2021 and July 1, 2022. But for the time being, from a salary standpoint, it's his current salary and a status quo agreement.
Thank you, John, yeah, just basically like the employees, you know, it's kind of status quo right now and we see what's going on. So we could vote on this on Monday in open session, we have it on the agenda and just, just vote without any, without any money into it. You know, or, or we also have it on the agenda for our closed session, if you guys wanna go into closed session and talk about that a little more, we can, on Monday.
So the, the closed session is an evaluation closed session, if you choose to do that.
Okay, well, that's the other question.
Or you can do it in October.
Yeah, 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 I think at this time, I, I was thinking about, I just wanna see what you guys felt about it, but I was thinking to postpone the actual formal written evaluation of Arden at the moment and maybe do all that in October. We'll kind of see how things go, but by then, do it later on, but right now, it's just kinda, probably, I, I didn't think it was something that we really need to do at this moment in time. Does anybody have any comments on that? Steve, how did I know?
Uh, you, you wanna give them a three-year extension without the evaluation, but maybe do the evaluation after the contract extension is an insult to every rate payer in the Mission Springs Water District. I would suspect that it would be better governance to at least pretend to talk about the issue, even if it's in a, a mock closed session where we pretend to display our issues with the leadership that the district is currently under.
Well, when I, okay, the fine, thank you, we'll, we can go into closed session on, on Monday, but the one I meant by formal is filling out all the forms. But hey, it's an evaluation, if we go into closed session on Monday and you have, or anybody, any one of us have any things to say, at that point, then we can, just so we don't talk about money, we can evaluate him at that point. But just not formal with this, what I was talking about was this form that we fill out. Okay, just not to have everybody have to do this right now. But we can definitely talk about that in closed session on Monday. Okay. John, anything else you wanna say about that?
No.
Okay. Anybody else had anything to say, no? Nobody hands, okay. So the next one would be then Mission Springs Water District, West Valley Reclamation Facility. Arden, is there any more on that?
Okay, I just let him back into the room.
Oh, that's right.
Arden? All right, while we're waiting for Arden, we can just go straight to Danny, I think.
Okay.
There's not a lot to really report on, and there is a written report that provided in the packet. It's just hitting on all the things that we've been talking about over the last month. We are, we had meetings, or, or we've scheduled meetings to talk about the bidding procedure and design schedule more specifically so that we can make sure that it complies with anything with the state revolving fund as we submit the project for grant funding. They have specific language about sole source and, and substitutions and things like that. So we've also worked with the WQMP, which is the Water Quality Management Plan. Easily explained as a plan that is, it goes into place after you build something so that you have, what you, everybody knows what you're gonna be doing with the water that generates from, from storms off the roofs, off the impervious pavement and things of that nature. So those are, those are other things that go along or running concurrent with the, the main, the main item, which is the design. We received, as we spoke about last month, the draft discharge, waste discharge requirements. There have been a couple of items that the, the staff has pointed out along with TKE. We've got a meeting scheduled next week on the 21st to go over that and make sure that there's, there were some items in there that, that weren't correct. So all, all these items are, are running and operating concurrently with the main critical task at this point, which is the design. So I know this is something I'll report next month, but right before this meeting, we had staff getting with ACOM to review the 90% comments and clarify questions and such. So essentially, the project is, is, is running along smoothly. There are just a, a lot of different elements that are happening at the same time. So not a lot to, to really report on new from last month.
Okay, thank you Danny, anybody have any questions on that one?
Uh, only one comment is that, Dan, I forgot to tell Danny, because we've been so busy today, but I think we do have a meeting scheduled for 11 o'clock on Wednesday of next week, which would be the 20th. And hopefully, and then we're gonna meet with Danny and Steve and I'll meet first thing in the morning or when we, when we have our regular meeting. So that's the only thing I can say right now.
Yeah, I misspoke, I hit on that, Arden, book when I said the 21st, it is Wednesday and it's being slated for 1 o'clock. So I apologize for that misspeak.
Okay, next item, the consent agenda. I guess there's only the minutes and the register of demand, so there's nothing to pull off of there, so we'll go into the financial report.
Can you hear me, Madam President? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Didn't know you were asking me something.
Would just like to briefly go through the financial statements that are in your Dropbox file for the nine months ended March 31st, 2020. Trends are continuing through this financial period. The last quarter of our fiscal year, which will start on April 1st and go through June, will be the one that has some unknowns in it as this pandemic effect starts to hit, hit the financials. Hopefully that impact will be minimal. We are lucky so far in all the indicators, and I'll touch on that a little bit more. But briefly, on this nine months, cash position is holding. We, the only large expenditures we've had this year are related to capital projects outside of the operating budget. Total operating revenue is tracking 4% ahead of budget. Operating expenses are currently tracking about 10% ahead of budget again. So as we've seen the financial trends so far this fiscal year, they have continued through March. But again, March 16th, I believe, was the first day that we closed the lobby. So the second half of March and then the next financial report next month will have a lot more information relating to the impacts of this COVID-19 pandemic. Quickly, earlier I refer, alluded to a new bill, stimulus bill that is being circulated in Congress currently. Recently read a report prepared by a consultant that we've actually used, Raftellus Consultants, well-known in the water industry. And in fact, their report, which is a summary of a survey that they took earlier about a month ago, was actually used in preparing this bill that's circulating through Congress. So their predictions in this report are that water districts of our size and nature, we should expect to see about a 6% increase in delinquencies. But at the same time, the next prediction that they may. But at the same time, the next prediction that they make is that we will, we should, should expect to see almost 5% increase in residential consumption. So being that our customer base is 95% residential, most of the negative declines are related to commercial customers. Hopefully this turns out to be accurate in its predictions. And hopefully these impacts are small. But as I mentioned earlier, we're currently in the middle, literally neck deep in the fiscal 2021 budget. And we are building in some conservancies related to this pandemic because we know the rest of this calendar year is not going to be as pretty as we would all like to see it. So with that, I will answer any questions I can.
Any hands up, Dory? Excuse me.
I don't see any. Director Grush has disappeared, so I don't know if he's got any questions.
Yeah.
Oh, there he is.
Okay. Okay, thanks, thanks, Matt. We'll go into a public affairs report. Who's doing that one? Victoria, probably. Hi, I don't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No.
Perfect, okay, great. So switch over to section 15. Just a brief update, not much as you, okay, sorry, told me I was still muted. Brief update, as you know, the majority of things are still closed, so there's not a lot in terms of like events. Well, there's not a lot, there are no events. As you'll see, briefly, in terms of a COVID-19 and outreach and what we're doing there, for the May, in the May bill, our customers will have an insert in there of pictures of our staff that have continued to work, of course, to ensure safe, reliable water supply as well as sewer services. So these photos have, you know, our, our staff following CDC guidelines as best as possible. As you know, social distancing in the field may be a little bit more difficult if they're working in the ground, but all employees are wearing masks. And so this insert will go out with the May bills. So it's the very first page in item 15, but I did email it out to the board as well prior to. And daily updates or close to daily updates continue. And those are also still posted on our website, mswd.org/coronavirus. And as we discussed last time too, the, the bill message, on your bill, there's a little text box at the very bottom, and that message is going to remain the same throughout, just ensuring individuals that their tap water is safe, things of that nature. So aside from the May bill insert, the, the rest of the outreach items are still the same. However, on our social media, which some of these reports you will see, we have our digital advertising report. And you'll see that our Google Ads and our Facebook Ads that we're running are continuing those same messages. So that your tap water is safe and then also letting customers know about the Bill Assistance Program through Help2Others and United Way. And so similarly, you'll see that on the Facebook Ads, the following pages. Then you have some website analytics, and I'm kind of jumping the gun here, similar to Danny. Next month, I'll report on what we're doing this month. But as a heads up, in the month of May, of course, we're still pushing the safe water component. We will also be hitting on what we decided at last board meeting, that the doubling of our Bill Assistance Fund, so we do have in that ad, letting people know that MSWD has doubled their support and, you know, directing people to apply. And then also, as we've talked about, and for those who have Facebook have seen, the sewer plant has, you know, had some rag issues. So one of the ads that we're running this month is encouraging individuals to not flush, non-flushable items, you know, for the ease of the system. So that ad's going to run through the month of May as well. And I'm open to any questions on the reports. As you'll see, it just really dives much more into the social media, into the Google. But otherwise than that, I am open to any questions.
Randy?
Yeah, I don't know if it was Victoria or Matt or who, but whoever put this together came out my bill. This is awesome.
Yeah.
Well, good, yeah. The backside has a good message, good also. Victoria, was this you?
Yes, it was. It was a team effort, but this did go out in our April bill. So emergency resources, you know, highlighting food assistance, utilities, mental health, and of course our sheriff for, you know, 911. And then on the back, we had our billboard message as well. So another reassuring component. So I'm glad that you guys got it. That means it did go out, which I know I have a box, but still.
A simple little insert, basic info, but it wasn't just about water. You know, it covered, like you said, mental health, other utilities, food banks. It was very timely, very good. Thank you.
Is this what the billboard looks like?
Yes, the billboard is on Palm Drive and Dillon, near the intersection there, heading south.
South or north?
South. Heading to the rest of the valley.
I don't go out that way very often. Okay, I'll have to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Victoria. Okay, monthly reports, item number 16.
Hard time unmuting people, which means you're muting yourselves.
Arden's got his hand up.
Arden needs to unmute himself.
Unmute yourself.
There you go.
Okay, um, yes, well, you know, I mean, there's nothing much, you know, strangely enough, it looks pretty normal. We did use less water this last month, but not substantially less. It looked like a pretty typical fluctuation. Could be more temper, you know, more weather related. The thing that was interesting is that our flows at the wastewater plant are not fluctuating that much. I would expect that with all these people at home, we would see more flows. And it's held pretty stable, and Bassam reports to us on this also. And the, and everything else looks pretty typical. I did, I did, I did, I did want to comment on Laura's Carpe Clay report. It's full this time, lots of stimulus packages for the COVID relief. So it is interesting, and we're watching that very carefully. One of the reasons you did the emergency declaration is that now that provides us the opportunity to apply for some of the FEMA money and some of this relief funding that they're putting in place. So and that's about it that I have for the monthly report.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on them? The only problem with the monthly reports when you look at them on an iPad is they're sideways. I missed my, my hard copy. Any more, any, no comments in there? Okay, next item is the upcoming events and directors reports, item number 17. I gotta find it on my iPad here. Anybody want to do any of their reports today?
We've only got two, Russ and Randy. Randy's gonna go.
Oh, and Ivan has his.
Oh, yeah.
All right, am I unmuted? Is that me?
Yes.
You're good.
All right. Let me get it caught up here. Well, all right, here we go. April 7th, Desert Water Agency Board Meeting, along with every other district in the valley and every other special district or entity, they also declared a local state of emergency. That passed 5-0. No arguments, no questions there. That was, that was pretty much easy. April 14th, CBWD Board Meeting was on their agenda for a Prop 218 notice for proposed replenishment assessment charge increase or what they call a rack rate. There was very little discussion on that, but it died due to lack of motion. Nobody, nobody wanted to talk about rate increases right now. It just, it just didn't go anywhere. Back to DWA, April 21st. Couple of things there. We're currently paying 155 replenishment fee per acre foot right now. They're proposing bumping that up to 165. Their engineers report, which came out last month, the April 2019 delivery numbers for the Mission Creek are wrong. They need to update those. So if you're looking at the engineers report, those numbers are inaccurate. They might, they might be out now. I don't know when they're gonna, when they're gonna come out.
We are checking on those.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Director.
I didn't get a copy of that this year for some reason.
I, I think it's on their website. April 28th, CBWD, for their portion of the Mission Creek, they are currently charging 135 and change replenishment fee. That will not change. They're going to leave that there. And this last year, I, I listened to it online. I don't know if it's 3,900 or 3,400 acre feet of water that they delivered to the, our basin, the Mission Creek basin. These two are actually in May, I know we're doing the prior month, but these two, actually this one's not too important, but I'll tell you anyway. May 5th, I found out at the DWA Board Meeting, not from CBWD, that their Assistant Manager, Robert Chang, is now on the state water contractors board. But here's the part I wanted to get to. CBWD Meeting, May 12th. They borrowed $20 million, state, the SRF loan, 1.6%. So if we're looking to borrow money for the sewer plant or any other reason, 1.6%, you're not going to get a whole lot better than that, I don't think, anywhere. And that I think is all I have on my, on my list.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Ivan, do you have the reports?
Ivan, I can unmute you. Oh, there you go.
I just have the one, April 7th. I did attend a Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce virtual mixer. Was pretty unique. I thought it was well, went well overall. They had about 50 participants, but it's a lot different via Zoom than in person. There's not really a chance to speak one-on-one with everyone. So anytime you spoke, you were addressing the whole crowd. But they did cycle through everyone, and we got about a minute to talk about different updates as far as what our business or organization is facing with COVID. They did have some updates from the chamber themselves and the county and overall as well, but it lasted about two hours by the time we did a round through everyone to talk. That's all I have is the one meeting.
I think Zoom, if I'm not mistaken, I think Zoom is the one that has a chat where you can chat by yourselves. At the side, it says chat, hit chat if you want to do that. Okay, Russ, do you want to do anything today? Reports?
I can't. Just a moment, hold on.
There's no, there's no.
Russ.
There's not even a microphone.
Russ?
He's speaking. He can hear us, obviously, but we just can't, didn't, can't. I thought you said you worked with him earlier and have it.
We did.
There's something that was clicked that didn't work for him. Monday.
Monday.
Sounds good to me, Monday.
Director Grush has got his hand up.
Oh, okay, I always thought he's not here. Steve, did you do any?
I did, I had a couple here. I'll have to go back through the calendar. But today, this morning, I attended online, of course, Aqua Stocks and Bonds Primer. And I think it was one of their companies that does their work had a conference on the subject of water district investing and how it's protected from problems that other, other investments might not be so safe. On, on, on the 12th, which was Tuesday, I attended a sponsored event online. Groundwater Sustainability Agencies wouldn't have had much of, it wouldn't have had any effect on the Coachella Valley. We're not considered a critical zone. But it was interesting nonetheless to learn about some things that they're going, that are going on there. On, on the 7th, an Aqua-sponsored event, PG&E Time and Use Conference that they had online about how their billing will, will work to offset some of the cost of the PG&E issues that they had up north recently. And let's see if I can figure this out. Keep losing my. That's it, I guess that's it. I thought I had one more.
You got Monday, well, you can do it Monday if you.
Okay, well, that's good. I just thought I'd throw that out there. I wasn't just sitting around defending myself from unwarranted accusations. I was actually doing some work on behalf of the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that was 17, 18. Was that 17? That was, who was tracking the numbers here? Yeah, that was 17. So 18 is correspondence, that's in the packet.
There is nothing this month.
Yeah, so we'll go on to District Council comments. JP?
Yes, we will have a, we will have a closed session today, and that closed session will be on Item D, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Potential Initiation of Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495 6.94, one potential case. And then I wasn't clear on whether you're having today, since you have the city or the general manager's contract on the agenda for Monday, whether you're doing the evaluation, whether you're going into closed session for an evaluation.
Well, we were going to do that Monday. If we, yeah, that would be Monday. Why?
No, I was just asking. But the, so the only closed session item that we're having today is Item D then.
Okay, and then we wouldn't have anything on any other closed session on Monday except for the evaluation, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, then that's fine. We'll, we'll, we'll do it that way.
Director Grush has his hand up.
Okay, then, wait a minute, everybody would have a chance then to read, read the contract and, and, and get an idea of what they would like to do. Yes, Steve, where are you?
I'm somewhere over here. I, I had a question for the attorney. Is there a specific reason? I thought that if there was a, why aren't we saying who? It seems like we're leaving a big window of information from.
So, so under the Brown Act, under the Brown Act, when, when you're dealing with a situation where there's a claim against the, against the agency, typically, typically, and there are some exceptions under the Brown Act, but typically you would state, you know, the parties involved, that there were pending litigation. The Brown Act does require, for example, on Item A, that's pending litigation. And so the Brown Act does require us to state the case by name. And, and so on Item A, we do that, Mission Springs Water District versus DWA. But when the closed session is to discuss potential initiation of litigation, the Brown Act does not require the district to name the, the potential opposing party.
Excellent information. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John. Okay, so general managers report.
I mostly, my world has been the COVID. And I've just shared with you most everything that we've done. So I don't have anything additional to what.
So I don't have anything additional to what you see in, in the report. Okay?
Yeah, well, you guys are all essential, where people like me are not essential. So at least you get to get up, get out and go to work once in a while. There's two sides of this story, believe me.
You're essential.
For days like today. Okay, Director's Report. Start with Steve.
I don't have any notes, so maybe I'll have them Monday.
Comments, I'm sorry, comments.
Oh, no.
Okay.
I, no.
When we change, when we change and go into closed, to closed session, you can ask John your question.
I got that on the other one. I figured the answer out, I think during the discussion. I was worried that I might have a discussion and we don't have a lawyer to ask for. I wondered if he could bring one along with them next week. But I don't have a question, so it's okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
Good without it.
Okay. Director's Comments, Ivan? No, Randy?
Are we gonna have a chance to, like, I just printed this today.
What is it?
Accomplishments? Are we gonna go over this Monday?
You know, I haven't even had a chance to open. I just got it today too, but we, hey. It's not on the agenda, is it?
No, no, it's, it's not. So, so it's really not going to be an agenda item.
No, I don't think so. No, that, that's usually, see, that's usually done at this time before evaluation time also. That's usually what's put together so we know what's been done throughout the whole year during, when we are evaluating. Arden, for us, and he might use it for other stuff. I don't know, his evaluations, I'm not sure. Anyway, okay, so, well, I can't ask Russ. I don't, I don't think we can hear Russ, can we?
He came back in with his audio. Let's see if we can. Russ, can you hear us? Can't hear you.
I think he has his volume off or his, or his.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So do you have any Director's Comments?
No, not really. No, I'll save it for Monday.
Okay. Okay, I would just like to say, I just have one little, it's kind of another sad comment, is Robert Stockton, named Bob Stockton, you guys might know him from Aqua. He's been on the Western Municipal Water District for years and years. He, yesterday, he was jogging and got hit by a car and didn't make it. Him and his wife were jogging together, and he got hit by a car, and, and he passed. Really, really a neat guy. He's, he was our LaFgo's alternate for special district seat. In fact, we just voted for him for that seat, so. Anyway, keep him in your prayers. Okay, so now we are going to go into closed, I asked everybody, right? Okay, get into closed session now, and how are we gonna do this story?
All right, so I'm going to put everyone going into closed session into a rating room, and then I'll put you in the closed session room.
We need to call, we need to, we need to call Peg. Peg is going to be in on this.
Okay, and, and is, is all the participants still on there, Dory, everybody?
Yes.
Public, okay. I'd like to thank all the public for chiming in today and tuning into us. Thank you very much, and have a good weekend and stay safe.
Thank you, Nancy. Arden, is someone calling Peg? She needs to connect.
Okay, I'll, I'll text her and tell her she needs to connect.
Okay.